Let's go ahead and call to order. Meeting of the Work Session of the Board of Commissioners, good morning all. I'll start by, if you received a text from me asking for money, that was not me. Pardon me? Yeah, you still have my Venmo account. All right, let's go ahead and start with our presentations kicking off with Al Vandenberg to discuss our budget.
Yes, good morning. Good morning again for some of you and good morning for the first time for the rest. So, we have, I will do just a brief introduction. Today, we're going to focus on the Special Revenue Funds. You can see those listed right on the screen. So those include Senior Milage, Veterans Milage, Ready By Five Milage, Lodging Excise Tax, Correction Detention Milage, and Special Project Fund. We can have questions and discussion as we go, and there'll also be an opportunity for further discussion at the end of the presentation. So without further ado, I'll have Marvin come up and walk us through our Special Revenue Funds.
Morning.
Morning, Marvin.
Off with the Senior Milage Fund, which can also be found on page 42 of your budget document. Eight-year milage approved by the voters in August of 2022 to support senior services, most of which are listed at the bottom of the slide. A programming proposal for the Senior Milage Fund will be presented to the Finance Committee on August 8th, and there's additional information regarding service, provided services on the area agency on aging website.
You pull the mic just a little closer to you, Marvin. Thank you.
Twenty-four proposed budget for this fund is $15.8 million, supported by $15.5 million in revenue, leaving a budgeted fund balance at the end of the fiscal year of $3.9 million. Property owners will pay $50 per $100,000 in taxable value in their winter tax bill for senior services. Any questions on the Senior Milage Fund?
Questions on Senior Milage? I see none.
Moving on, Veterans Milage Fund, which can also be seen on page 50 of your budget book. This is an eight-year milage approved by voters in August of 2022 to support veteran services, some of which are listed at the bottom of the slide. The 24 proposed budget is $1.9 million, supported by $1.5 million in revenue, $300,000 in general fund support, leaving a $662,000 fund balance at the end of the fiscal year to support the first quarter of the subsequent fiscal year. Property owners will pay $5 per $100,000 in taxable value for veteran services in their winter tax bill. Questions on the Veterans Milage?
Commissioner Wooden.
Sorry, refresh my memory. The transfers in and out, the transfers in, is that our general fund contribution or is that?
Yes, it is. That is a general fund transfer.
Perfect.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This fund, as well as the senior fund, seems to have quite large fund balances at the end of the year and seems to be growing. Can you just talk a little bit about that, the fund balance, and why there's such a large fund balance when we have such a great need out there in both of these areas?
As you can see, in 2023, the fund balance grew, and that's a symptom of the nine-month fiscal year. And we leave some reserves at the end of the fiscal year to support the first quarter, October, November, December. Property tax revenues, this is a winter tax bill, property tax revenues come in in December, January, February, so they need some reserves to cover that first quarter of the fiscal year now that we've changed to a September year-end.
That would apply to both senior milage and veterans?
Senior, veterans, yes, Ready By Five.
Commissioner Hennessy.
My question was the same. Other than, you do have a requirement for a little bit of a holdback from them. What is that percentage or how, you know, how do you figure that? What is the holdback?
It used to be around $300,000 as a percentage of the revenue, but that's going to change. We're going to bring a revision to the policy in 2024 now that we've changed the fiscal year because now it's going to look something more like 25% to 30% held back to cover one-fourth of the first quarter of the year.
All right. Go ahead.
Next, Ready By Five, which can also be seen on page 38 of your budget document. This is a six-year milage approved by voters in November of 2018 to support early childhood services, some of which can be seen at the bottom of the slide. Programming proposal will be brought forward to the Finance Committee on August 8th for the 2024 budget, and additional information on provided services can be found on First Steps Kent website. Twenty-four appropriation requests for this fund is $7.6 million, supported by $7.6 million in revenue, leaving a budgeted fund balance of $2 million. And again, that'll cover the first quarter of the subsequent fiscal year.
Questions on Ready By Five. Commissioner Wooden?
So, you know, with this milage fund, we always assumed a high fund balance in the beginning because of the schedule of the tax collection and the, as I recall, the plan was to ramp up services to pay down fund balance, and then COVID occurred right when services were ramped up. What was our estimated fund balance target for the end of the milage period? Trying to remember what that, I mean, clearly they're reducing their fund balance now and they're, they are, they've been able to catch up to a degree. I'm just trying to remember what, what was our target for that?
Ideally, you know, kind of going back to what we said previously, at the end of the milage, if it's not renewed, you'd want to have 25%, 30% of the tax collections left to cover that last quarter, which would be, you know, would be the last calendar quarter, but the first fiscal quarter, and that's where it would cut off if it wasn't renewed. As you can see, there's a large expenditure in 2023, $12.4 million, excuse me, yes, $12.4 million. That's probably on the high side. It's probably going to come in something less than that, anything less than that, any unspent budget would be eligible for carry forward into the subsequent fiscal year into the 24 budget.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's great to see that they've been able to catch up. I mean, if I'm looking at it, just taking the revenues, 25%, 30% is roughly where they're at now. So it is showing that despite the hurdles that they had to face, they've been able to ramp up their services and catch up. So that's great to hear.
For those that weren't around when this was put into effect, the milage was approved in 2018, the first year revenues came in in 2019. Programming wasn't intended to start till 2020, then COVID hit, and then they built up a large fund balance, and so the program had to be ramped up in order to spend some of those funds down and invest into the, into the community. Property owners will pay $24.09 per $100,000 in taxable value for early childhood services in their winter tax bill. So, any other questions on Ready By Five?
It appears not.
Okay, next, the Lodging Excise Tax Fund, also on page 39 of the budget book. This fund accounts for proceeds generated from transient tax revenues collected out of room rentals in Kent County. Twenty-four appropriation request is $13.6 million. That includes a $2 million installment payment to the general fund to reimburse for the outstanding general fund advance. It's a $10 million advance to this fund that was made during the recession and during Yes, there has been, there was a million dollar repayment previously before COVID hit, and then we kind of put a pause on that. Other than that first $1 million, this is the first installment payment of the outstanding Included in the proposed budget is $145,000 for administration, $10,000 for festival, $75,000 for art prize, $2.8 million for contributions to Experience Grand Rapids, $8.6 million for DeVos Place debt, and $2 million for the partial reimbursement of the outstanding general fund advance. But it is supported by $14.5 million in revenue, most of which comes from transient taxes. As you can see, in 2022, the transient tax revenue was just under $12.5 million, and that was a new record, and we expect to see that get exceeded in 2024, the next full fiscal The combination of revenues and expenses results in a fund balance, a budgeted fund balance of $17.8 million. As we mentioned before, like some of those other funds, fund balance will grow significantly in 2023 due to the shortened fiscal year and the timing of the debt payments. Debt payments are made in December for this fund, and the fiscal year-end ends in September, and so we've built up the fund balance. And also, keep in mind that half of that fund balance is general fund advance.
Commissioner Hennessy.
How did we come up with the $2 million figure for the annual payback, especially when their fund balance is continuing to grow?
We're allocating this over a five-year period. We're just trying to, we're doing, we did $2 million, and we're just kind of monitoring as we go forward. We didn't want to take it all at one time and, and potentially issues with this fund if something was to change. We do like to keep a fund balance in this fund equivalent to the size of the debt service, just in case something like COVID hits and shuts down the hospitality industry. We got enough funding in this fund to cover that large debt payment on the DeVos Place bonds.
I guess I still don't understand how we came up with the $2 million figure as opposed to $3 million or 25, you know, 2.5 million. I don't understand how we came up with that.
According to our forecast, that was a prudent number. That's what we recommended to use, was $2 million a year. And again, we don't know what might transpire in the future, and we just want to take it slow and keep an eye on the fund balance to make sure that fund balance and revenues are sufficient to cover the outstanding debt.
I think the other thing is, really, it's one of the reasons it's recommended to is because of the strong comeback of the Motel Mop backs. Obviously, if you look at what happened in 2020, 2021, it wouldn't have been possible. But we've always known our backdrop is very, DeVos Place bonds are paid off on 30, but then there's a whole bunch of revenue that's available that we could repay really quickly and may hold. So I don't think that, you know, we've always planned, but I think that really it's dependent on the strength of the Motel Mop backs. And because it's come roaring back, it's on record now, we're able to do this. It could have been less if we would have kind of had the performance of that.
Commissioner Legrand? I'm sorry, do you have a follow-up?
That's okay.
Okay, Commissioner Legrand.
Commissioner, quickly. I'm not in a hurry. Thank you, Chair. This is probably relatively minor, but can you explain what the payments for Art Prize are? I mean, I know there's been some sort of transfer in ownership of that as an entity, but what does our contribution amount to and what's it for?
So this morning, Finance approved $75,000 out of the hotel motel tax revenue for Art Prize. Basically, the original organization that founded Art Prize decided to end that and move to Art Prize 2.0, which is Kendall, City of Grand Rapids, and DGRI, and a whole number of community organizations have come together to fund Art Prize 2.0. And so including Experience Grand Rapids and the City of Grand Rapids, I think they're each in for $150,000. We have a whole list of those in the action requests that went to Finance this morning. And so my recommendation to Finance this morning was that we fund Art Prize at $75,000. That would need to be approved as a budget amendment in this year's budget to do the Art Prize that happens shortly, in a couple months, and then this $75,000 would be part of the next year's budget for Art Prize.
Is it going to be happening every year again?
Well, I think we'll see how Art Prize does, but yes, I think the intent is that this would be a contribution. We also included some economic impact data in the action request, and clearly, in my mind, this is an investment in continuously increasing the hotel motel tax receipts. So it's spending money to make more money.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. So, I'm trying to understand this. So, the outstanding debt table that you're showing us, is that the debt owed to the County General Fund, or is that the DeVos Place bonds?
This is the outstanding debt for the DeVos Place bonds, and it's going to grow approximately $350,000 a year until it's paid off in fiscal year 2032 at $11.1 million. So it's going to continue to escalate, like I said, $350,000 a year. And I also want to mention that the Lodging Excise Tax forecast, that was included in the agenda item this morning, so if you didn't see that, that's out there, that shows the installment payments on the reimbursement of the general fund advance.
Okay, gotcha. So, I'm always forgetting about the, I forgot how the bonds for DeVos Place are different than your normal bonding process where balances get, outstanding debts get lower as you pay them off, not higher. And so, but, you know, I'm still struggling where if we're estimating by 2031, we are expecting $11.14 million in outstanding debt, and currently we have $17.7 million. Why we're not able to return more dollars to the general fund now, given, you know, I realize those are forecasts, we can't predict what things are going to be like over 10 years, but given, I guess maybe the question I have is, are the interest rates and the interest we pay on this debt predictable or variable? And so, are we firm in our estimate that the 2031, 32 outstanding debt is going to be that $11.14 million, or is that an estimate in itself?
That is the number.
That is the number. And so, I'm just kind of struggling here with, we've got $6.5 million more right now in fund balance to pay an outstanding debt that's going to be $11.4 million, and we have debts to the County General Fund that we've used in the past. I'm just wondering why we're not collecting more at this stage. I'm all for being patient and being prudent, but I just, I wonder if that's just a little bit beyond prudent and just wondering why we're not returning more dollars to us now.
I encourage you to look at that forecast. It was in, it was in the packet this morning. But yeah, it is prudent. We don't want to take it all at once, which we could have attempted to do in 2019, and look where we'd been in 2020. So we're trying to just take it slow. There's no reason to necessarily take it all at once and run the risk of having to advance more funds in the subsequent year.
And then my follow-up is, when we advance these dollars and they come back, they do come back at an interest rate, correct?
No, these ones do not. There is no interest rate being charged to these funds to disadvance.
Which just means that we're advancing dollars from 2020 that are now, have less purchasing power in 2023. This is where I'm struggling with this, is that when we get these dollars back, they're not going to go as far. And I, I just, I struggle to see, there's prudent, and then there's even a higher level that I think is, frankly, is a little bit excessive. And given the fact that we can't, that we aren't charging interest on our advances, when these dollars come back to us, they're not going to be as impactful in 2031 when we're able to collect them. So that's just my two cents.
Another point of emphasis, I mean, if you look at the 2022 fund balance, ending fund balance, $9 million, well, we took a big jump in '23 just simply because of the change in the fiscal year.
That's fair.
And that should be factored into that equation as well, so.
No, I appreciate that reminder.
And one other factor would just be, when we look at the fund balance of the CAA, they also have a capital improvement program, and that figures into the analysis as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. I'm curious about the projection. So, just like rough math, pardon me, but so 2022, actual 12.5 million into the, from the Lodging Excise Tax. 2023, annualized, like 13 million. Like, it just, it strikes me as, you know, surprising that, you know, we'd go up a half million bucks, '22 to '23, but then with the economy kind of jittery, you know, good news here, bad news there, like suddenly we're going to triple that growth rate for next year? Could you talk more about the projections and why, like, the growth rate would triple next year compared to this last?
Well, you know, the, to be honest, the $14.5 million is an aggressive estimate. In the past, we've had comments from commissioners about estimating it too low and having to come back mid-year for a supplemental appropriation so that we could pay Experience Grand Rapids. And so we decided to be a little more aggressive this year on the revenue estimate.
Further questions on the excise tax? Is, maybe you can just run through your outstanding debt grid that you have on the board?
Sure, so the 2023, '24 debt service payments, $8.6 million. It's going to grow $350,000 per year approximately to 2032 when the debt matures.
So those are annual payments?
Those are annual payments.
So in 2023, '24, the excise tax will pay $8,500,000 approximately for debt service. Does that include the payment to us or just on bonding?
I'm sorry, I said a question again.
What does the 8.5 pay?
That's the debt service on DeVos Place.
Right. So then in 2024, that goes up to $8 million, or actually it goes down $1,000, but then each year, the amount that will be paid out of the excise against the DeVos Place bonding goes up until 2031.
That's correct.
And then it pays off?
Then it's paid off. And that's why we're being prudent with the drawback on those funds that was advanced by the general fund, because this is going to grow significantly, and we are guaranteed that the, the tax, the transient tax revenues are going to grow at that same clip. They grew significantly in 2022 just because we came out of COVID, and now we expect those increases to be relatively smooth, not such a big increase.
And after 2031, we'll have an extra $11 million a year to address.
That's correct, and by that time, you'll probably have more capital projects.
And just for a little more emphasis on these questions, the bond rating agencies look at this fund considerably, given the previous advances from the general fund. So that's why we also keep an extra year's bond payment in there in fund balance, just to keep more prudent so we can show them. We have plenty of reserves in case another downturn, so that's another thing we look at, paying that fund back to general fund.
Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. Just thinking back to the whole advance, I have in my head some recollection from years ago that the DeVos Place bonds are not refundable, like, we cannot change the payment terms at all, which is, I imagine, a factor in like how we space out the payments for, you know, refunding the advance. Is that true?
And I think that weighs into that a little bit, but yeah, that is true. These aren't refundable bonds, they're capital appreciation bonds, so the interest continues to grow each year, and that's why we watch this fund very closely. We just want to make sure, we don't know what the economy is going to be like in three years, four years, five years. We just want to make sure the general fund is not on the hook to pay this debt, and so that's why we are very cautious and we monitor it closely.
All right. Other questions on the excise tax? All right, let's move on.
Correction Detention Fund, which can also be seen on page 43 of your budget book. This is a 20-year milage that was approved by voters in August of 2008. The 24 appropriation request is for $25.1 million, supported by $22.9 million in revenue. The budgeted fund balance is $10.8 million at the end of the fiscal year, like some of the other funds. The fund balance will grow significantly in '23 due to the nine-month budget and the timing of debt payments. Again, the debt payments for this fund are paid in the fourth quarter of the calendar year, so that's our new first quarter, so. $24.1 million in transfers out is made up of a $20.3 million transfer to the general fund to support correction detention operations and facilities, and a $3.8 million transfer to the debt service fund for debt on the correction detention facilities. Looking forward, looking at the long-term forecast, it is assumed that annual revenues will grow to $28.6 million in fiscal year '30 when the milage expires. Transfers out to the general fund are estimated to grow to $24.2 million in fiscal year '30. Series 2019 debt matures in fiscal year '31, the series 2016 debt matures in fiscal year '36. According to the forecast, there will be approximately $11.6 million in reserves in fiscal year '30 when the milage expires to pay the final six years of debt. Both the debt and the reserves should be liquidated by the end of the fiscal year in 2036. And this assumes the milage is not renewed, so this is a prudent conservative approach. If the milage is renewed, you'll see revenues continue in two years, fiscal year '31 through fiscal year '36 and beyond. We're just not going to assume that that's going to happen at this point.
All right. Questions on the Correction Detention Milage? I see none.
Property tax owners, or property owners, excuse me, will pay $75.46 a year per $100,000 of taxable value in their winter tax bill for the Correction Detention Milage. Okay, next, or lastly, the Project Fund, which can be seen on page 57 of the budget book. This is a special project fund that accounts for activities financed primarily by special revenue sources and some restricted grants. Twenty-four appropriation request is $15.4 million, supported by $13.8 million in revenue and $1.6 million in general fund support. Programs included in this budget are listed here, highlighted by funding source for each. Public safety makes up $14.7 million, or 96% of this budget, $1.4 million of which comes from general fund support. This budget maintains existing programs and services and includes additional funding for four new school resource officer programs and expansion of the township law program for Gaines, Algoma, and Cortlandt Townships. Under the budget are $663,000 is for the guardianship program, $213,000, which is subsidized by the general fund. Questions on this?
Commissioner Legrand?
Thank you, Chair. You spoke about four new school resource officers. Are these projected? These are not, haven't been decided yet?
Three in place, and there's one more. It hasn't been dedicated yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, looking forward, the Finance Committee is scheduled to act on the proposed budget on August 8th. Also, on August 8th, the Finance Committee will act on annual grant budgets such as the Childcare Fund, Indigent Defense Fund, health fund grants, prosecutor grants, to name a few. So you'll see those on August 8th, and there'll be opportunity to ask questions on those at that time. Public budget hearing is scheduled for August 8th, and the full board is scheduled to act on the budget. It's meeting on August 24th.
All right, other general questions? Yes, Commissioner Diaz?
Thank you, Chair. I had a couple of questions if I could. I was hoping that somebody could explain to me how I could explain to my constituents, say, what the limitations are on how we can spend our general funds. Because I've heard, I know that Al and a couple of others have said, you know, that we have legal state limitations on how those funds can be spent. There's a difference between how that can be spent in our RPO funds, for example. So that was one. On page 16 of the proposed budget, there's a line item for the personnel, but there's not a breakdown on how, a further breakdown on how those funds are spent for the personnel. And so I was curious to see, more specifically on, for example, how much we're spending on the healthcare for county employees. And then lastly, I just saw the, we just had the timeline of And then, lastly, I just saw the, the, we just had the timeline of the proposed budget for the next month or so, or next, the rest of the summer. But I'm a little bit confused, I suppose, because we just had a retreat, I suppose, or you want to call it that, a couple of weeks ago, and I was under the impression that there was going to be some work done, I suppose, on some of those, on some of those concerns or actions that other commissioners wanted to take when it comes to the budget. And so, I was just curious on how, if that's going to be worked on for next year, or if this would be in time for this budget?
No, good questions. I will handle two of those and have Marvin do the rest, or Jeff. So, let's start with the strategic plan. I think I had mentioned before we did the last strategic plan session that we're off kilter with the new fiscal year, and so that we're actually going to do strategic planning twice. And I think there was some value in doing it back in April, because with eight new commissioners and the rest of commissioners having gone, gone through it once, I think it was valuable for everybody to get their legs under them as far as how we do the process and that sort of thing. But we are realigning everything with the new fiscal year. For example, Chair Steck and I didn't do a state of the county back in April when we typically do. We're planning to do one this fall. And then, we plan also to do strategic planning again in October, November, so it feeds the budget process, which starts early next year again. So, I think we'll be on the right cycle. I think it would be fair for us to go through the work that you did in April and point out where there are some things being addressed in the budget. I think that's a good question, and we'll follow up with that. As far as how general fund money is spent, I, I think, pun intended, in general, because it's a fund where the ad valorem tax receipts go and state revenue goes in that's intended for general purposes, state law does not allow the general fund money to be spent on items that give an individual benefit to someone. For example, we can't use general fund money to pay for housing programs. We can use HUD money. We can use the monies that come through KCCA or special, a special millage is another way to provide funding for things that the general fund can't pay for, and that's the, the basic line. The ARPA fund had totally different guidelines on how that could be spent, and that's where I think a lot of confusion came in. You would not be allowed, per state law, to take seventeen million, seventeen and a half million and set up a housing revolving loan fund, but you could do that with ARPA money. And so, that, I think, the unfortunate part of ARPA maybe, from that perspective, is it gave people a different understanding of what they thought government could do with government funds. Another one that you and others have asked me about in the past is the money that we now get from the marijuana tax. The state law that provided for that did not designate that that money go to anything in particular, and so it goes into general fund other revenue, and then it becomes part of the total general fund budget, and then it, it's limited by the uses for which a general fund can spend money on. I, I remember when all that went through, there was just general conversation about a concern that there would be extra cost in the sheriff's area jail, health department due to the, the passage of recreational marijuana. And so, I think at least the conversation I recall at the time was to try to help provide local governments that had a dispensary within their corporate limits additional revenue to deal with some of the negative side effects of having that new reality. So, that's in general. I mean, I could write something up for you, or we could talk about this more. If that wasn't clear, please ask more questions. But basically, we can't confer an individual benefit with general fund money.
Thank you. And so, and, and so what we could do is essentially route that money through an organization or another entity, and then they could do their thing. But we, as the county, wouldn't be able to do that. Is that, like, how to, kind of, kind of how we do with economic development is that essentially the case?
Well, let me answer that in a couple ways. We're part of partnerships that do that kind of work, or we could get a foundation grant and do that type of work, or a state grant, federal grant. If we use a source of money that can be used for that purpose, then the county is allowed to do it, but all that accounting would happen in a different fund. The county has something like thirty-five, thirty-two, thirty-five funds and three hundred different activities, so it would be set up completely separate of the general fund to do that type of thing.
So, then, say if the key comes down to we can't, you can't benefit a specific person or business, could those funds, then those general funds, like, for example, the cannabis, cannabis excise tax, where we're getting one point five million this year, could that be used for, say, public works or something that would benefit the community as a whole and not one particular person or one particular business?
It would need to fall within the guidelines of what the county government does. So, the county government proper, the general fund doesn't do public works, as an example, but if we can use it to, on a program or the type of expenditure that we are responsible for. I mean, we have the whole public works department, which is a component unit of Kent County. It's separate, but still tied to Kent County. But no, we wouldn't typically take that money and, say, do a street project to help out a local government or something like that.
Okay. Well, I think, thank you for the answers, for sure. Still trying to learn exactly what, how we could make the best use of those funds, especially those funds that are coming to us, like, like the cannabis excise tax that historically has been, has done different things to different communities, I suppose. Just to end really quickly, I don't want to take too much time. I just do want to say for the record that I, I don't quite agree with the fact that we're not going to be moving forward on some of the things that we brought up in our strategic planning, especially because it sounded like some of those things were expressed from, by commissioners who have been here for a while, and it seemed to be things that have been worked, have been in the works or have been talked about in the past. And so, I, and I think some of the others here also would have, would like to see some of that being worked on a little bit quicker. I know that we're coming up on that next month already, but I, maybe I was mistaken, but was under the impression that would be for this, for this year, but.
Let me vet what we're doing with the plan, so you can at least see what we are doing from what was talked about in April.
Sounds good.
And that may be pleasing or not. I don't know. We'll have to see what the response is. I did also want to mention, just because I think it needs to be said, when you look at the cannabis money, it would be appropriate for the board, if there's a demonstrated need in one of the areas that I mentioned, whether it be health, or sheriff, or jail, or, or one, KCAA, to say, wow, we could really benefit this population, either tie it to cannabis or not. Obviously, those are things you can do with, with that money, without saying, we're going to help individual businesses, or we're going to give money to individual people. That's kind of where that line is.
And he had a question on page sixteen.
Yeah, I think I'll have Marvin handle the balance of those questions.
Question regarding page sixteen, I think was the amount of the healthcare, that twenty-two point five million dollars, that number is the healthcare number. Healthcare costs went up five percent in the budget this year for twenty-four.
So, of the one fifty-four, it's twenty-two point five? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. So, first, I wanted to thank staff for providing us that updated budget table that showed not just the proposed budget, but the total requests. Not for this budget, I realize we, we do have a schedule we have to keep to, but for next budget, if there's a way of doing some kind of high-level narrative of the deltas, not for every fly-spec issue, but if there are kind of larger discrepancies between a request and a proposed, at least giving us a narrative of explaining that, like, what, what was the, what was the request that was denied? And obviously, you know, don't need a narrative for every line item we have. That'll take just as long to, you know, as it is to prepare the budget itself, but something to at least call our attention to it, so that we can ask more informed questions. And then, the other comment, I, I certainly understood that, given the fiscal year change and the schedule we have from that, it is a little bit more difficult to build a new plane while we're flying the current one. And so, if we could at least get what you've described in terms of the alignment with the strategic planning process in some kind of memo, maybe not ahead of finance committee, but maybe ahead of the board public hearing, that way, we, we know for the next fiscal year what we're, what we'll be working with. I, I certainly appreciate that.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Hennessy?
There was a question today, and I've seen in the report too, that we're going to be asked to change the fund balance policy again. When will that happen? And what, and, and, you know, what kind of notice will we have and explanations for it?
Bringing that forward after the, after the new year, some, early two thousand twenty-four, before we start the next budget process?
The new, the new year, the new, the new fiscal year or the new year?
To be clear, the, the new calendar year. So, once we get into January, that'll be on our list of things to start tackling, and we'll bring that forward before we start the next budget.
There was specific mention on the marijuana tax money that's being received. On page thirty-two, I'm still curious, on the opioid settlement funds, on how we receive them and how they might be allocated, if they're just going to general fund, fund use, or if there are specific ways in which we're going to allocate that to really meet the opioid crisis.
The, the budget in here for opioid is just a placeholder at this point. I don't believe there is a final plan in place yet.
So, it'd be in the, it'd be sort of a part of the balance, then, the general fund balance?
Okay, the opioid settlement plan, the spending plan, still has to go through the committee and board process for approval. We had the informational sessions, but I think the question is, are we going to put the opioid money in a special revenue fund and then draw from that into the general fund, or how are we going to actually account for that, I think?
Counting will be, we'll want to keep it in that fund, because what happens is if you transfer, say you transfer to the general fund, you transfer a hundred thousand dollars to the general fund, and you spend seventy-five. You don't want to get that money to get stuck in the general fund or lost in the general fund, so you want to leave it in this fund and then either charge direct to this fund or allocate it to the fund in a, in specific amounts, once those are identified. But it's important to keep the special revenues in the, in this, in this fund, so they're used correctly.
Okay, so that almost two million dollars will just be left in the special category and a special fund?
Until we decide what to do.
Until we decide what to do, given, okay, on this budget, that makes sense. Did we account for any, the, what we thought would be an increase and has turned out to be a little bit of an increase in the revenue sharing money from the state? Is that reflected in here?
The, the new revenue sharing numbers are included in the general fund budget, yes.
In, in what we've already received, we anticipated. Thank you.
Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair, for a second time. I'm, I apologize for this final question. Well, I don't apologize for it, but I apologize I didn't think of it sooner.
But it is the final one.
It is the final one. I promise that. Per the conversation about general fund restrictions and individual benefit and general county purposes, does that also, would that preclude us from using general fund dollars for services that were originally in the county's purview, but then spun off through our independent authorities? So, for instance, Network One Eighty, our airport, those began as internal county departments and then were put into independent authorities. Could we still use general fund dollars for those, to assist those services and not run afoul of the individual benefit or the, the limitations that we have on our general fund?
Scenario, you know, you have public purpose spending rules. Public, public funds can only be spent for specific purposes. We've never seen a scenario where we use general fund dollars to support a enterprise fund, for example, and hopefully, we never get to that point.
But, for instance, Network One Eighty is not an enterprise fund in itself. It does get Medicaid reimbursement, but it, it, I guess my, my more direct question, could general fund dollars be used for Network One Eighty or community mental health?
Well, it is, isn't it?
It is. We have two plus million dollars in the budget for contribution to Network One Eighty for mental health services, so.
Perfect, thank you.
That could increase if we decided to increase.
And, and also with the zoo, up until the board's ARPA allocation to the zoo, we did have a contract that required the county to invest some capital funds over time up to a certain limit. So, yes, I mean, that would be possible.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Chair Steck, and I have a few questions, so if you'll indulge me, I might take a minute here, but I'd like to kind of better understand, you know, particularly when I'm looking at the proposed budgets versus the requested budgets. And I see under the sheriff, we have two point seven million dollars less proposed than was requested. And it's the biggest wholesale cut that we have from, you know, not cut, but difference between the proposed and the requested. And, you know, Commissioner Wooden mentioned the narrative, and I think absent kind of that detail and the narrative, it's difficult for us to sort of, I mean, literally read between the lines, right, and figure out, you know, where that's coming from. So, I, I'd like a little clarification on that, but then, I guess I'll just continue on with my other question. And I, as I'm looking through these, I noticed that every, every budget here is less than what was requested, except for the policy and admin budget. And I just, you know, I wanted some clarification on what this, the eight hundred thousand increase in the management studies, what that entails, but, but more importantly, I'm concerned about kind of this process where you've got departments that, you know, particularly in the case of some of our departments are headed up by independently elected officials, like the sheriff, you know, they need to come and kind of fight for the dollars that they need, and it's concerning, I think, particularly when we talk about public safety, which in my view is, you know, one of the core responsibilities of local government, particularly county government. So, I know that's a lot, but I just, I'm just concerned about how are we doing the process by which, you know, we've got oversight from the fiscal services and from admin on the other departments, but I guess, I guess the responsibility might fall, fall to us as the board to have oversight on admin and fiscal services. So, that's just kind of at the base of all the, all the questions I had, so, thank you.
I can't, I can't speak specifically regarding the difference between the requested and the, and the proposed. I don't have that statement front me, for one thing, and there's a lot of information in there. So, what we could do is follow up on any of those specific questions with a more, more specific answer as it relates to the policy admin, the eight hundred thousand dollars you, you mentioned, we did build in a one point two million dollar contingency into the policy admin budget to support public safety and other areas around the county should unplanned events arise. And there's also funding in there for some MPPs, employment study, and the sheriff staffing study for their road patrol and, and new website and things like that, so.
So, basically, we have weeks of meetings with department heads, with elected officials who want to meet with the administration to talk about the different proposed cuts to the budget requests that have come in. From my perspective, we leave with a negotiated settlement. Not everybody's comfortable with where we end up at, but I think it's a process that's worked well, because we simply don't have the resources to fund what everybody wants in every area. And so, if you were to talk to somebody and say, are you a hundred percent comfortable with where you're at? I wouldn't be surprised if they said, no, we're not, but I don't think anybody is. I mean, a budget is a moment in time where we see what are the needs, what are the resources, and in over thirty-nine years of doing this, I've yet to have that light come down from heaven and, you know, where all the requests are less than the money available. I mean, it just doesn't happen. And so, we're in a process where we have to cut requests in order to get to a budget to recommend to you. I do know that, and we can, so if you would like us to do a memo on specifically on the, on the sheriff's budget, we can do that, provide that before the next meeting. I do know that, that, yeah, I think there's a, we have another meeting coming up where we can talk about some of that, and then also, we'll do a memo on that. But, but I think that, I think really, it's a, it's a, it's a good process, there's hard discussions, and we come to a conclusion at the end. I mean, and so, I, I think probably we had over four hundred different items that we discussed over those several weeks of meetings, and in some cases, the case was shown, no, this shouldn't be cut, so we didn't cut it in the recommendation. We had other cases where maybe a department said, well, we'd, we'd much rather have you cut that than this for this year, and then maybe we can tackle that next year. So, I mean, that's kind of how the process works.
Yeah, I, if I may, Chair, and then I, I'll be finished, but. Yeah, I, if I may, Chair, and then I, I'll be finished, but, you know, I'm sensitive to that. I think in general, as somebody who's in favor of a slightly more limited government, I am generally opposed to more spending, but when it comes to things that are core services for the county, I think it's critical that we provide them in that way. And, you know, I understand that we don't have enough to go around, but the concern again is everyone taking a cut, but then when I see that the policy admin line is getting an increase from the proposed, that's, that's just, it's very concerning me in terms of the process, so.
No, and that's a very good point. I just did want to mention that of the one, we didn't budget contingency in the administrator's budget when I worked here the first time. That was a separate contingency line, and we had a management studies area where we would fund most, and we still do. But, so for example, we're going to be meeting soon on the jail staffing study. We also have the funds for a sheriff staffing study in that line. And then we also have a half a million for the, beginning the implementation of the jail staffing study. So, even though it looks, it's not all going to be spent on the Board of Commissioners and the county administration, it's literally money that's there because we weren't ready to allocate it somewhere else until we get to a decision point in different areas.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sensitive to that. I think it's important to, just, I said one more, but this, I promise it'll be my final, but Commissioner Diaz mentioned the, you know, input from the commissioners' priorities, and I think, in fact, I know, and no disrespect Commissioner Diaz, I know we'd have different priorities, we disagree on what some of those are, but I think it's critical that we do have some of that input, because, I mean, this is one of the things, you want to talk about public safety is one of the things that my and some of my colleagues on one side of the aisle, and, and the Democrats too, indicated that was a priority. So, I'd just like to make sure that we're including that, and I'll, I'll let others talk. Thank you, I appreciate it.
And I'll just add something real quick. And part of the changes aren't necessarily automatic reductions, they were better estimates at the time when we made the final decision. So, there was a few in the sheriff, I remember, had outstanding contracts that were negotiated further after the budget was submitted, which resulted in lower costs, which resulted in some of those downward changes too. So, it's not always a direct cut, but it's sometimes better estimates as the process continues, so.
All right, let's see, I think you had it once before, so I'm gonna go to Commissioner Hildebrand first, and then we'll come back and get you.
Thank you Chair Steck. Just quickly, along the same lines as Commissioner Green, when I interviewed for this job last year, I talked a lot about prioritizing our spending to core services, and one of them I talked a lot about is supporting our law enforcement. And the area I represent, you know, Lowell Township, Ada Township, Part of Cascade, they rely on the county sheriff and, and her staff. The city of Lowell has its own police department, but, so, just for the record, I mean, I really want to, I, I need to go back to the people who hired me to show that I'm prioritizing our sheriff's office and our law enforcement. It's a tough job, and we need to, I think, invest there. I did talk to a few folks about potentially setting up a reserve fund in the sheriff's office that can be utilized if necessary. If there's a big community incident or event and requires a lot of extra hours and resources from the sheriff, you know, maybe that, that fund is there in the, in the sheriff's office, but then they could come before the finance committee and say, look, in the months of, month of July and August, you know, we have, you know, quite a bit more expenditure because of some incident, and then the finance committee can then appropriate that money over to the sheriff's office to cover expenses, or some, something like that, a concept like that. Then we can all show, all of us who talked about prioritizing and supporting our law enforcement, can show that we have invested, we have a reserve fund invested. If there's a problem, we could cover the cost it, it takes to protect our county and the people who live here. So, just the concept to throw out there and something I'd like to explore in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner, certainly we can explore that, talk about that further. That is literally the definition of the contingency fund. So, if we have an area of the county that has unexpected expenditures or unexpected incidents, that is the process. A department head or elected official would go to the finance committee and ask for an allocation of the contingency. But certainly, there still could be merit in having that separate fund. I just wanted to mention that we haven't been running bare, that's what we do with contingency.
All right, follow up or, okay, Commissioner DeBoer and then.
Thank you Chair. So, I'm, I'm new to this, and I'm not on the finance committees, but my perception thus far is that when we come into these budget work sessions, these numbers are all prepared, and the majority of commissioners really haven't had a say in the allocation of the funds and, and the requests of the different department heads. And you guys are all good at your job in administration, but it seems to me that as representatives of the public, we should be far more involved in this process. And I don't know necessarily that, I mean, I guess we could break out the funds into different, you know, different departments or different fund balances, and we can go through and work through it together. I mean, if we were to appoint three to take a department or something like that, I, I'm not quite sure of the solution right now, but I just really do think that the commissioners need more voice into this process and in the capital improvement, or capital improvement plan, is that what it's called, CIP? And I also would echo Commissioner Hildebrand and Commissioner Green about prioritizing public safety. I think that's something that we really, I mean, my constituents, that's primarily the services that they use.
Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you Chair, just have one last question that I forgot about. I unfortunately wasn't able to attend the last budget work session, but I did watch it on YouTube, and it was a pretty impassioned or passionate public comment around economic development. And so, I was curious to see or to ask if you could tell us how you all got to the two hundred thousand dollar number for economic development, and then to say how that, because I believe that goes to a different entity, just to see how we got there and how that's used.
Number that was presented the last time we met was specifically in the general fund. There's, when we get to the next presentation, we'll, we'll define that a little further. But if we look at the, I don't have it in front of me at the moment, it's on, it's on the table there, but the lodging excise tax, for, for example, that's fifteen million dollar budget, that's all economic development. We have tax captures, probably eight million dollars a year that's captured for economic development. So, that was just one particular fund, that's not economic development across the entire county budget.
Is the two hundred thousand the right place? Is the two hundred thousand the right place investment?
Two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred was for right place, fif, it was two hundred seventy-five thousand, excuse me, two hundred for right place, seventy-five thousand dollars for the, uh, grant, was it the, escaping me right now, but the other foundation that we commit, commit funds to for economic development, I'll think of it in a second.
Yeah, two hundred thousand is our membership contract with the right place, and we are one of the larger investors, I think. Some of our major corporations are ahead of that, but we are one of the bigger contributors to that. But, but that, you're right, as, the person who made the impassioned public comment assumed that two hundred thousand is all Kent County is doing for economic development, and it's literally in the twenty-five million dollar range when you look at all the different sources and uses of funds.
Thank you. And just to wrap up, and the reason why I ask that is because, and I appreciate the explanation between general fund expenditures and all of that, but it seems to me that if we're routing these funds to entities other than going out and spending them, maybe that we're not benefiting one specific person or business, but if those entities are spending all of that money in particular areas and not in other areas, then that's where my concern comes in. That's why I bring it up.
In, in the case with the contract with the right place, it's very common in, in city and county government particularly, to pay an organization to do economic development instead of having our own economic development staff, because we probably would spend significantly more than two hundred thousand dollars to have an economic development department as part of Kent County. But that is a typical local government, county, city government expense.
Thank you.
Commissioner Teal.
Thank you Chair Steck. I also want to echo some of my colleagues' comments about their support for the sheriff's office. I have some concerns too, that they're not being fully funded. I've already heard from my supervisor, a couple of my supervisors, about their concern about the sheriff not having what she needs. I guess I wanted a little bit of clarification. Did you guys say that you are holding money in a fund for the sheriff's department, and how much, how much is in that fund?
Yeah, the contingency fund has five hundred thousand dollars set aside for implementation of the sheriff's study, and then there is an amount to pay for the, that's the jail staffing study. There's also money set aside in there to pay for the road patrol staffing study, which would happen in the next fiscal year.
So, those are all held within the admin budget right now then?
Held within contingency, yes, within the admin budget.
Okay, I guess I'm just a little frustrated why we wouldn't just allocate that directly to the sheriff's office.
The way the process would work, once we have a proposal come to you to fund something for the sheriff's study, it would come out of contingency. And it was really a factor that the sheriff's study wasn't done until like a week ago. And so, when you look at our budget process and how it works, it made more sense just to put the money there until the final sheriff's study results were known, and then it would simply be implemented by allocating the money when the requests come.
Okay, I guess I also would like to echo my concerns with the process as well. I know, I sat in on all the interviews for the, the admin position, and I know one of the things that you said that you would offer would be more input for the commissioners, but it's been a couple of years and I've not quite seen that yet, so I'd like to see maybe, I, I know at one point you mentioned a clicker option for the capital improvement plan, so that the, the commissioners could give input. I would like, I'd really like to see a revamp of the process for next year.
Okay, Mr. Baker.
Yeah, I'm struggling with looking at these public safety numbers. It seems, seems to me that we're increasing the budget for public safety by ten million dollars, and I think that the, I think that it would be easy for the commissioners that support public safety to go back to the conspiracy and saying that there's an increase. If I'm reading this correctly, road patrol is getting an extra four million dollars from what they have in the previous year. Am I, are these numbers correct? Huh? Nine month versus twelve, okay, I see. So, is there actual, a cut to public safety?
There's a cut to the request of public safety.
There's less than was requested, but is that less than?
The total budget is not going down, no.
Hey, Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you Chair. I, this is something in my, I guess, eight, eight and a half years being a commissioner, has kind of always been like, what's the best process to, you know, involve commissioners, you know, in the budget process without us getting too deep? You know, I, I for one, you know, don't want your jobs. Like, I've got four county meetings, you know, this morning, and I don't want necessarily to have more, and the, but the flip side is like, how do we, you know, get all the commissioners involved, you know, in the process so that the input's there? So, I'm, I'm very supportive of kind of the realigning of kind of the strategic planning timing, you know, with the new fiscal year and some of the adjustments there. I think, I think that will be a positive. Commissioner Teal just mentioned the, the clicker. That's a great idea, I love the clickers. So, if we can work that in, I think that's great. And I also sat in on a couple of the standing rules committee, and one of the things that was being discussed was now that we're twenty-one, is a two subcommittee structure right, or would be, be better served by a different subcommittee structure that could align with like different areas of, you know, budget and, and county services and everything? And so, so I, I think I'm, I'm glad that conversation is continuing to try to, it's, it's a very difficult thing. I don't, I don't know what the right solution is, but I'm very supportive of that, you know, conversation to try to figure out how to get commissioners more involved without necessarily getting us, you know, in more meetings.
Over the years.
Yes, so, yes, so, thank you for what's happening there and the, and the continued work from the standing rules committee as well on that.
Yes, thank you Commissioner. So, for those of you that have been around as long as Matt and I have been, that balance between allowing administration to do what it needs to do and developing the budget and engaging the commission, there's, there's never a right answer, it's never been a final answer, it's always been subject to review, reconsideration, and my guess is that won't change. And so, to the extent there's a request that we continue to look at that, that's a fair request. As far as the standing rules, I think, other than almost impossibility of scheduling this summer, we would be a little further along, but our intent is to ramp that up and get those, those meetings rescheduled. I think we had a target date of October one, so. All right, Commissioner Oliver King, did you have your hand up? You're pointing to Commissioner DeBoer. Good, anyone else? All right, Al, did you have any wrap up here?
Only to say that we had talked about having another budget work session. If that's the board's desire, please let Chair Steck know that. Obviously, as we look at the calendar, it's difficult to get another meeting scheduled, but we will certainly do so. Yeah, or we could schedule smaller meetings or even individual meetings, depending how you want to do that.
All right, Marvin is standing behind you like he's got a comment, there we go.
Closing, I, first of all, thank you for all the questions. The answer to the other piece, that economic development was the Kent Conservation District, sorry, I forgot. I just want to mention, you know, I, the total county budget's five hundred and eighty-three million dollars, it's over thirty-five funds, three hundred plus cost centers, so it's a big budget. But that budget, and some of you have caught on to that, I can see is, is broken down to the lowest level of detail in the schedule of uses, which says at the beginning of each fund type. We have six fund types, according to the state chart of accounts, and at the beginning of each fund type, we break the budget down into the lowest level of detail. So, I didn't, if you haven't looked at that, I encourage you to take a look at it. If you have any questions, submit questions to Regina between now and, and July thirty-first, and we'll get your questions answered in a Q and A document ahead of the next meeting.
All right, thank you Al, thank you Marvin, Jeff, for your participation in this, and please contact either myself or Al if we want to follow up on another session. We'll do the best we can to fit that in. Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you Chair. I believe we did at our last budget work session, talk about, we wanted to see the request number and then the allocated number, and I see that we've got the, I mean, we've got the budget and everything, but we still haven't seen actually what the department has wanted and what was given. So, I was wondering if we can get more in-depth information on that.
We did provide a request number for each area of the county, and then a proposed, that was in an email that sent pages, we redid pages twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four of the budget book. It's in the email, yeah.
Okay. Lots of emails, including my ask for that funding thing, so. Commissioner Green.
Yeah, just briefly, will the questions we had to hear today in this work session be a part of that document even if we don't, you know, send them along to Regina, this, when we do a Q and A before the next meeting? That was my question.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
All right, if nothing else, next item of business is public comment. If there was anyone here from the public that wishes to address the commission on our matters within this jurisdiction, you may do so now, please identify yourself, and you have up to three minutes. And I see none, next item of business is miscellaneous, any miscellaneous? Yes, Mr. Hildebrand.
Thank you Chair Steck. Just a reminder, tomorrow is the ribbon cutting for the Grand Agriculture Center of West Michigan, I've talked about that a few times. Thanks to the commissioners here last year to support that project. It's a beautiful campus, kids are excited all over the county, they'll be showing their animals there at the annual county fair in less than three weeks, but the ribbon cutting's tomorrow, and I know there's also a big ribbon cutting this afternoon, which I didn't have anything to do with, but I might show, stop in and check the new road commission building out too.
Drive on some of those new roads.
Yeah, sounds good, so, thank you.
Any other miscellaneous? Commissioner Diaz.
Quickly, just wanted to let you all know that Commissioner Ponce and I visited the factory yards development about two or three weeks ago, and it's frankly much bigger than what I thought. And it's, it's gonna be great to see that development moving forward. I think they're potentially gonna be moving forward on starting demolition and other things as soon as this fall, and if not, then this winter. It's gonna be a huge development in the twentieth district, so I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous? All right, we do have another meeting scheduled after this, I think it is set for eleven o'clock. I was gonna see if we can move that along a little bit, but right now we may not have a lot of time between those, so we'll take a little break, but don't go far, because we'll want to get started with that promptly. that promptly. Eleven, all right. With that, we are adjourned.